It is 4:30. I will open the regular city council meeting of the City of International Falls on October 21st, 2019. Our first item on the agenda, if you could please join me with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We'll do the roll call. We have one counselor missing with Walt Buller. He's out of town with family. So we will, our next item is to approve the agenda with any additions or deletions. And as I understand it, we don't have any additions or deletions this evening.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing no discussion? Question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Agenda is approved. Next item is the approval of the minutes. The first minutes are from the regular city council meeting of October 7th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion.
Counselor Deitch.
Second.
We have a second from Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on the minutes of Monday, October 7th? Hearing none? Question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. We have three for the motion and one abstention. Motion carries. Next is the committee of the whole meeting from October 10th regarding our Public Works and Infrastructure projects. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make motion.
Counselor Deitch makes motion to accept the minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Counselor Kraus. Any discussion on the minutes of the Public Works Committee of the Whole Meeting? Hearing none? Question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Three for the motion and one abstention. Motion carries. Next, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting from October 14th regarding the process of doing interviews with candidates for the Council at Large job, uh, position.
Still moved.
We have a motion from Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Any discussion on the October 14th Committee of the Whole Meeting? Hearing none? Question.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. We have three for the motion and one abstention. The motion carries. And finally, we have the Tuesday, October 14th Special City Council Meeting, which, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, the Tuesday, um, October 15th Special City Council Meeting. Motion to accept those minutes.
Motion.
We have a motion from Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Motion and second. Do we have any discussion on that Special City Council Meeting? Hearing none? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Four for the motion and zero against. Motion carries. Our next item is to adopt the claims for payment from the city. If you look at the resolution that is before you, we have, um, monies going into the, from the water fund of $5,559.67. Money's going, coming from the Sewer Department for $4,392. We're, uh, we have 600, I'm sorry, $66,666.66 going to our permanent improvement. That's coming half from the water and half from the sewer. We have Fund 403 Capital Outlay, $25,760.42. From water, we have $19,136.17. And from sewer, we have $6,624.25. For total transfers of $102,378.75. And then we have Accounts Payable Claims. City of International Falls is $475,617.30. Airport Commission Claims of $23,331.81. And Airport, uh, I'm sorry, International Falls Public Library Board Claims of $35,438.57. For a total claims, uh, for payable is $534,387.68. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
Still moved.
Counselor Nelson makes that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Kraus. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the Accounts Payable? City Administrator, you have anything to add?
I do not.
All right. Hearing no discussion on the Accounts Payable for, uh, we will now call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes. The Accounts Payable passes four, zero. Next, we have audience. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to bring something to the council that's not on the agenda? In the event that something comes up, we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'm sorry, that's a lie. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We have the second and final reading of the ordinance change. Uh, this is to Chapter 11 to amend the zoning map for first addition to International Falls Business Park from P1, which is public, to M1B Manufacturing and C1A Commercial. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the second reading. Actually, before I do that, is there anyone that would like to speak on behalf of the, uh, on the second reading of the ordinance? It is a public hearing, so this is your opportunity to speak on the zoning change for the business park.
Um, could you just inform me a little bit? I'm kind of behind the times a little bit.
Sure.
Where is this located and?
On 22nd Street. As you come into International Falls, as you're heading north on 53, just past the Chocolate Moose, there's that indent, uh, yeah, and Ricky Roach has been doing some work back there, building an additional, uh, building. And there's, there's, uh, I believe six plots, plats that are being formed. And the, the property was originally set up as a public use property. And to be able to sell those and make them a more viable commercial entity, the goal is to switch them over to manufacturing and commercial so that, uh, the intent would be to sell that land so that we could, um, have some businesses come into town in that area.
May I have any businesses that are manufacturing that's looking at doing that or?
I think with what Ricky Roach has been able to do down there and be able to, um, bring in some business down there, it makes it more attractive. So we're trying to be proactive by switching over to the, from public use to commercial.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else to add to what I just said? All right. If there's no other public input on the zoning change, Chair would entertain a motion to change from M, or P1 Public to M1B Manufacturing and C1A Commercial.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. We have a motion and second for the second and final reading of the ordinance to switch the, um, to switch the zoning on that property. Any discussion? Please.
Mayor, counselors, I just wanted to make it clear for public information as well as for yourself is that the way that this particular ordinance is drafted is that it won't be effective until such time as the first addition to International Falls Business Park is actually, um, the final plat's been adopted by the city council and recorded at the county recorder's office in the event that there's some change to the law. So the action while being approved tonight won't be effective until such time as you actually approve the final plat, which should be forthcoming fairly soon.
Okay. Any questions for the city administrator? Well, hearing none? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Four, zero. The final reading of the ordinance is adopted. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have, uh, we have two items on the consent agenda, consent agenda. First is to approve travel and training expenses for the office clerk, building official, city administrator to attend continuing education at the 64th Annual Institute for Building Officials on various dates from January 8th through the 23rd in Brooklyn Center, Minnesota. And the second is license renewals that have been presented that do not include, um, any alcohol or tobacco. And just as an informational piece for the council, consent agendas, once we have a motion and second, there is no discussion, so we go right into the voting. So I would accept a motion for the consent agenda.
Motion.
We have a motion by Counselor Deitch. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Nelson. Question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Four for the motion, zero against. Motion carries. Next, we have, under our new business, consider road closure request for parade, uh, Christmas parade, use of Smokey Bear Park and fireworks on Friday, November 29th, 2019. Andrea Pastor.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks. You have to turn on the microphone.
Oh, I need to turn this thing on.
Right up top.
It's on. Okay. Thank you for having me. Um, I sent through a couple of things in a packet, um, a tentative schedule of the events that we're asking the city council to approve, and then also a map of the parade route, which I understand is the standard approved parade route, um, for the community. Um, we're looking to have a parade on Black Friday, um, at 6:00 PM. So we would look at, um, maybe starting to close down the road somewhere. I think that's part of our question. Um, looking at the way the application was filed last year, it was from 6:00 to 7:00. Um, but I believe the road would need to be closed earlier than that. So I'm looking for the recommendation as to what time the council feels would be most appropriate to close the road to and from, given that we're going to extend the activities after the parade to Smokey Bear Park and then end with fireworks. So.
Um, any, any thoughts on what time we should close? I would, I would think the business community usually stays open until Fri-, uh, 5:00 on Black Friday, and they don't want to interfere with, with business.
Right.
So we don't want to close that road down any earlier than we have to. And I think it, uh, being part of the VFW in the past, they literally have put the blockage up just before the parade, like within 15, 20 minutes. But, I mean, if we did a half hour before, that would be more than sufficient. Um, but it's council's decision if anyone else wants to weigh in on, on times on that. Any other thoughts?
No, that's fine. I think a half hour early would be fine.
What, what time are you?
The, the application last year was filed for 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
And that parade started at 6:00. So I suppose they just put out the barricades within minutes of the parade starting. So.
Legitimately, I believe that's how it happened.
Yeah. And that's fine. We can do it that way, too. Um, and then in terms of when it would close, she had put originally 7:00 PM. Um, the parade obviously finished sooner than that. And now this year, we're, we're asking, um, for approval to keep it extended and closed longer, um, so that we can do fireworks at the end. And we're also looking for feedback on whether the council feels that 7:30 or 8:00 would be a more appropriate time, given kind of our tentative schedule of events, um, if there's any feedback on that. And then we are also looking, um, for approval to do a VFW flag retirement ceremony as a way to hold a bonfire in Smokey Bear Park.
Yeah, we can do that. Um, yeah, I, I, yes. Uh, so then the question really is at this point, what time we would like to close down or have the fireworks? Uh, what time do you get, what time does it get dark? I don't even know.
It'll be dark at 5:00.
Right.
Okay, good.
It'll be dark for the parade. Yeah.
It'll be dark, dark. The sun will be down at like 4:30. It's the end of November.
And do you have other events that are going to be in the park that may need?
Yep. So we're assuming the parade will take about 30 minutes. We're going to do, um, hot chocolate, hot apple cider and cookies. We're going to have Santa inside the pavilion and have the pavilion kind of, um, closed off so that it will be warm, kind of a warming station also. Um, we're hoping to have carolers and/or some kind of music. Um, and then we're also looking, um, to do some food trucks. Uh, the fire department and first responders are hoping to do their toy drive and fill the boot campaign during the parade. Um, and then we're going to have, um, based on some recommendations, you know those display inflatables that you, people use to decorate their yard? Uh, we would like to have something like that set up throughout the park as kind of a walkthrough for young kids and families to have something kind of fun to, to walk through the park. Um, so we're wanting to give some activities to have some downtime for people to spend in the park and then have the parades at kind of the, or the fireworks at the conclusion. Um, don't want to give too much time. It's all based on weather, of course, if people want to hang around. Um, so we don't want people out there freezing, but we want to have enough to do that people feel like they're not rushed. So.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with whatever time. I mean, 7:30 would be fine. And then keep the road blocked off until 8:00.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yeah?
I would just suggest that at least 30 minutes after the parade, or the fireworks are supposed to start, that we keep the road closed to allow the fire department sufficient time to, uh, connect to their trailer, relocate it from the road surface, clean up anything that they might have to do before it's reopened for traffic. So I, I would say at least 30 minutes after the fireworks start. So if you're thinking 7:30 for fireworks, 8:00 would be probably the earliest to reopen the road.
How long do fireworks typically last?
10 to 15 minutes if they're shooting off the trailer.
I don't know the answer to that.
It's not as long as the 4th of July. They're obviously, they're about 30 minutes, 25 to 30 minutes then. So it, it would be probably only 10 minutes from what I've seen for icebox days.
I'd be my guess.
It's relatively brief.
Yeah. And that's, there'll be the equivalent of what they do at icebox days. So.
Okay. So if everyone's, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, as far as the time's concerned, Chief Maston, I would assume that your guys are the ones that are, are you doing the barricades or are we doing the barricades?
All we do is escort the, escort the parade, the city cruises at the barricades.
Okay.
Close down the roads.
Okay.
It's at the detour site.
But I would imagine that the city crew could coordinate with the firefighters to make sure that they have ample time to get their stuff.
Yeah. So I think that they just need the time for, for advertising the event.
Yeah.
So.
And then we can work behind the scenes. I do need something for my MNDOT application approval from the chief of police. So I will need something from you. Um, and I can give you what, um, Tricia gave me last year if that's helpful. So, yeah.
So are you okay with 7:30 for fireworks?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay. So fireworks at 7:30 and then on the application, you can have 8:00 for, uh, for reopening of the road.
Perfect.
So as, as my notes have it, the, the idea would be to close the road at 5:30, have the parade at 6:00, and then have the fireworks at 7:30, and then reopen the road at 8:00.
Yes.
Please.
What, what last question, Mrs. Pastor? Could you tell me where you're going to line up?
Yes. So we are going to be lining up by Falls Lumber.
Okay.
Um, and I believe that's where they line up all parades, is my understanding. Um, and then they come across. But the parade route itself is just down that main street.
Right. But you'll be with, you'll be competing with traffic as you come up the avenue there.
Uh, I, I will say this, that we have worked that, uh, that schedule, that parade route with the Public Works Department. And he has assured us that that is how we have to submit that to the state.
I'm just making sure, because Second Avenue won't be closed there. Looks good.
All right. So we would need a motion to, uh, allow the Christmas parade to close the road at 5:30, to have the parade at 6:00 PM, to have fireworks at 7:30 PM, reopen the road at 8:00, the use of Smokey Bear Park, and fireworks on Friday, November 29th. Chair would entertain that motion.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you. This is awesome. I'm really glad to see that this is going to happen this year. So.
Well, and I will add, this is not me alone. Um, there are a very passionate group of employees at the hospital that asked me to help lead this committee. And I, um, also have some business owners and some community members that are also participating. So there is a fairly decent sized group of people that have come together to make this happen. It's not me by myself by any means. So.
But as a spokesperson, thank you.
Yes. I will bring that back to the committee.
Any other discussion? So I have a question. If somebody wanted to put together a float and be in it, who would they contact and how would they go about doing that this year?
It would be me. And that will end up in all of the advertising, too, that goes out as we start. Um, we, we didn't want to make anything official until after we got the approval from the council. So there will be, um, some advertising that will begin starting probably tomorrow. Um, and we'll have that information.
Okay. Um, I would like to inform you that at our, uh, our rec commission meeting, we had a discussion. We have an additional $2,000 that have been sit aside for doing, um, community activities or recreation that does not involve sports. And the rec commission, um, the board, the rec commission board will be putting together a float for the parade this year. So we will, uh, we will get with you as soon as we get that information. And we will be putting something in as a rec commission this year.
Awesome. And will the contact person be you on that?
Yeah, I'll be the contact on that.
Perfect. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to approve everything for the Christmas parade. Any other discussion? Okay, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Four for the motion, zero against. The motion carries. Thank you so much, Andrea. All right. Next, we have, uh, item number two is appoint a mayor pro tem. This is up to the council. Um, historically, a couple of things have happened. The mayor has made appointments in the past, and the council has concurred on those. Um, and the way I read the statute, the way I, I understand our ordinance as it's written is, it is the body's choice to make a second, a motion and a second to appoint one of your own. And I am just a member of this board. So, um, I understand that Counselor Buller is not here. It's your guys' choice if you want to wait and appoint a, uh, mayor pro tem at a later date. Or in the event that you guys feel comfortable with doing it this evening, you're welcome to do that. But, um, I'm going to let the council make this decision. Please.
I, I would like to see us wait. Uh, Mr. Buller may decide that he doesn't want to do it if he was elected or nominated. Or maybe he would. I think it'd be a better idea to have a full council when we make this decision.
Okay. Everyone else agree?
I move that we table it for the next meeting.
Okay. We have a motion to table the appointment of the mayor pro tem to the next meeting by Counselor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Deitch. We have a motion and second to table till our next regular city council meeting, the appointment of the mayor pro tem. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I thought standard operating procedure was to appoint the person who wasn't here so they couldn't say no.
Does that change anyone's idea? All right. So we have a motion and second to table till the next meeting. And I think that that's a very fair way of doing it. That way we have a full council. And we haven't actually had a full council since, uh, Mayor Anderson has passed. So I, I think that's a very good choice. Um, so at this time, we will call the question on the tabling of the mayor pro tem.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Four, for the motion to table, zero against. Motion carries. Next is to consider some mayoral appointments to various internal committees. Um, I did have that dropped off at, at your, uh, stations this morning. It, uh, you can see the outline is, uh, everybody that, everything that's crossed off is negated. Everything that is highlighted is added. The one thing that I would like to point out is there's two pieces of appointments that dictate what this board does. I think that, um, the mayor pro tem, whoever that chooses, ends up being, should be in charge of the budget and finance. Um, the mayor, the, I, I will preside over the meetings and the committee of the whole meetings. But I think whoever this council decides, uh, to be the mayor pro tem would be, uh, take over the budget and finance committee meetings. Um, I did reach out to Counselor Nelson, and I asked if she would be interested in serving on a couple of boards. And she was interested in human resources. And my thought was with her background in law, it would be a good choice to have her as the chair of the Human Resources Committee. Um, I did take Counselor Deitch off that one. But I did add Counselor Deitch to the Rainy Rapid River Zoning Advisory Board. Um, I did some research. I can't find out what that is. So as soon as I find out what that is, it's all you.
There you go.
Uh, Public Works and Infrastructure. Um, we've had three members of our council that have been on that. Uh, Mayor Anderson, myself, and Counselor Buller. And I think we all need to assess what our strengths and weaknesses is. And anyone who's sat on boards of, uh, Public Works and Infrastructure, they have to understand that that is my weakness. And it is definitely Counselor Buller's strength. So I would like to, uh, make Counselor Buller the chair and just leave the two of us on there. Uh, historically, up until we have this, had this new council, uh, it has only been, uh, myself and Mayor Anderson. I think that Counselor Buller would be a great choice to be the chair of that committee. The Airport Commission, I will be taking Bob's position, um, uh, on the Airport Commission and leaving Walt on there. Uh, Chamber of Commerce, uh, a couple of years back, we started a, um, dialogue with the Chamber of Commerce and so we could have a better, um, communication with them. And in the last three weeks of this position, I've been having lots of conversations with, uh, with, uh, Ms. Heibel. And it has been very fruitful. And I know that she was having the same conversations with Mayor Anderson. So I would stay on as that. Um, I'm moving Walt on the Highway 53 Task Force from, um, the alternate to the, the person to go to. And as I mentioned, Counselor Buller, or I'm sorry, Counselor Deitch goes to the Rapid River, uh, Zoning Advisory Board. And this is the other, the next one that changes is the E, the, uh, Kuching Economic Development Authority. I will stay on there as mayor. I was on there as a counselor. But I think whoever, uh, is the IFEDA chairperson should be the person that is representing us on the Economic Development Authority. Right now, I happen to sit on both of those chairs. So as we find somebody else to, uh, represent the city's, um, EDA, that person will go on KITA and represent us there. On the rec commission, again, uh, with Mayor Anderson passing, we have another position that needs to be open there. And I'd like to put, uh, um, Counselor Nelson on that board. So these are my internal committees. And, uh, with consideration of, of the board, I would like to also add one, uh, one external committee. And if you choose to, uh, table this to the next meeting, that's fine. There's no immediate need. But I'd also like to appoint to the North Kooch Sanitary District Terry Murray to serve, uh, the remainder of Mayor Anderson's term. Um, their next meeting is not until, uh, mid-November. So if you choose to table this, that would be fine. Um, I can put it on our next agenda. So I do have our internal committees. And if you're interested in, uh, in accepting a external committee, I do have the one for the North Kooch Sanitary District. So I would entertain a motion for either internal and external, or however you seem fit.
I'll make the motion to, uh, accept both.
Okay. We have a motion to accept both my internal committee appointments and the North Kooch Sanitary. North Kooch Sanitary District of Mr. Terry Murray. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second. Councilor Deitch and Councilor Kraus. Any discussion on the appointments? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four, zero. Next, we have the approval of the licenses for cigarettes and tobacco. And we have Family Dollar with a 3-2 off-sale license, effective October 22nd, 2019. We have effective January 1st, 2020, County Market Liquor LLC for a cigarette license and an off-sale liquor license. We have the Family Dollar with a 3-2 off-sale license. Holiday Station Store, number 380, a 3-2 off-sale license, a cigarette license, gasoline pumps license, and a restaurant license. Miners Incorporated would be a 3-2 off-sale license, cigarette license, gasoline pump license, and a restaurant license. And Super One would be a cigarette license and a restaurant license. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those licenses.
So moved.
Councilor Nelson makes the motion to accept those licenses. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Deitch. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Chief.
Questions, Counselor?
Thank you.
We have a motion and second, discussion, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll abstain. Motion carries, three, zero with one abstention. Next, we go to consider our five-year capital improvement plan and priorities for public infrastructure projects prepared by WSN. City Administrator or Commissioner Brokaw, how do you want to go? Both of you would be knowledgeable on what we have before us.
Come on down, Ted.
Mr. Mayor and Counselors, the council met as a committee of the whole, I believe, on October 10th, with our engineers from WSN, and both Kirk Meyer, as well as Joe Sutherland, who was formerly the highway engineer for the county, were present, and they've worked extensively with our public works staff, which includes Gary Skolman and Ted Brokaw, but then also with the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee over the last several months in preparing a five-year capital improvement plan for the city of International Falls. And the need for the plan to state and summary form is merely to be able to project what kinds of improvements we want to make and when we want to make them, so that we can adequately prepare plans and specifications, go out for bid, award bids, and then afford the maximum construction period possible for actually doing the improvements. Again, what's driving this longer-term vision of what we need to do is that we've been working as a council extensively as part of the sales and use tax approval that the public had authorized in the referendum back in November of 2018, is a 1% sales and use tax, and those sales and use tax proceeds are going to be used to help us upgrade our public infrastructure. So essentially, this is a proposed plan to show what kind of roads are going to improve, or what roads are going to improve, and when they're going to be improved, primarily in 2020 and 2021, and then lay out some estimated costs for that. And so what you have in your packet today is a, is a memo that's dated October 10th from the engineers, lays out the proposed improvements for the years 2020 through 2024. And then there's also a separate memorandum of the same date that shows the assumptions that WSN had used to prepare the estimated costs for the various expenditure items, and then also laid out, or it was combined to come up with a proposed bond issue that would finance those improvements over a period of time. And so you can see from the information that WSN prepared that the bond amount for providing construction proceeds only was about $5,895,000. There's some use of municipal state aid funds, and so those are laid out in those two memorandum. The attached sheets show the street classification system, as well as graphically depict what roads are going to be improved in 2020, 2021, and actually other improvements through 2024. So this is what's proposed. It includes some water maintenance, some sanitary sewer work, as well as painting and conditioning the elevated water storage tanks in both 2020 and 2021. So this is the proposal for a five-year CIP, and when the council had discussed this at a committee of the whole meeting on October 10th, you had directed that this be placed on this agenda so you could have some discussion about how you want to move forward, so.
All right, with that background information, do we have a motion to accept the five-year CIP?
So moved.
So we have a motion from Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. All right, I will open the discussion on this. This is, this piece of, of information that you guys have before you is legitimately four years in the making. We have waited for our road assessment study, our water study, our sanitary sewer study. We've been trying to televise our, our sewers. We have done smoke testing to try to find where things are. This is very comprehensive. This has went into effect because we were able to get the sales and use tax. A lot of this is years of work that has finally come to fruition. There is a price tag attached to it, and it's not just the sales and use tax, and I think that we all have to be very knowledgeable about that piece of this. There is a large amount of money that the city is going to have to come up with, not so much in 2020, but in 2021, '22, '23, '24, to make this happen. We have historically done our budget, went through everything, and whatever monies we had left over after we did our budget, that's what was able to make it to our Public Works Department. That if we adopt this, this is a target for us, and it's going to be more difficult to be able to do our budgets in the next couple of years, but it is my perception that this is what the citizens of International Falls wanted when they chose to do the sales tax. It's also my perception that this is the best choice to add our own money to the monies that the taxpayers are going to be paying through the sales and use tax. For, I wish Councilor Bowler was here. There were, in, in the past month or two, there was projects that came out, and it wasn't nearly as in-depth as what we have now. At one point, we had a handful of roads, and when I say a handful of roads, I legitimately mean a handful of roads. And it, I think the vast majority of the city is going to be getting work done. The problem that we're going to have as a city council, and I've already asked the Chamber of Commerce to help, and I'm going to ask other groups and organizations to help us, we're not going to be fixing the worst city roads in our community. What we're going to do is fix the roads before they are totally broke down and unserviceable. So if you have an unserviceable road, we will get to it down the road, but we're trying to get our city to be at a standard that is acceptable. So if you have a broken road, it probably won't be the first one fixed. However, some of our roads that are deteriorating, those will be fixed, and they'll work for the next 20 years. So that's what this project is. Some roads are getting water and sewer done. We won't be fixing the roads for a while, but we'll get the water and sewer fixed. So down the road, when we come up with our next CIP, we can fix those roads. So this is a monumental task for the council. It's going to be a monumental task for the mayor pro tem, whoever that ends up being, for our budget for the next year. But this is very important, and I think that this is a lot of hard work from previous city councils, going back to when I first got on. So a lot of work came into you looking really good today. With that being said, if anyone else has any other discussion or points that they'd like to add? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four, zero. And that is a target. It does not necessarily mean all those roads will be done, but that is the target in the engineering, and as that comes back, we will approve projects as needed. Next, we have the authorization to submit a letter of intent by October 31st to ARDC to participate in the federal 2024 Transportation Alternatives Program. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, as you pointed out, the federal government has a Transportation Alternatives Program, and they're announcing solicitation to receive applications for the fiscal year 2024. So they'll award as much as, or anywhere between $100,000 and $600,000 in funds to do a number of transportation-related projects. And I did attend a meeting at the Arrowhead Regional Development Council down in Duluth a week ago, Friday, and there was about a dozen people in the room, and they indicated that for our region, there's only about $900,000 available. So there'd be some competition. It is a competitive grant application process, but the first step is to submit a letter of intent. Doesn't have to be really well-defined, but the advantages of this particular program are is that it provides 80% funding that would be on a reimbursement basis, much like we do with municipal state aid streets and the airport grants that we get from the federal government, but it will pay 80% of the expenses, and there's only a 20% match. So I envisioned, and what was included in the CIP that you just adopted, is that in 2022, one of the roads that we were looking at, or two of the roads that we were looking at improving is Seventh Street, just to the east of Highway 53, and Second Avenue, all the way up to and just north of Second Street. So potentially, we could install a 10-foot by two minutes trail along that alignment, which is in our comprehensive plan, future trail map, and then we can get connectivity between what we're doing on Highway 53 and the existing trail that goes out east to Rainier on, on County Road 11 that the county had done a couple of years ago. So that's one area that I had considered requesting funds for. And then another would be is to try and promote the safe routes to school concept, is to put a sidewalk on the south side of 11th Street from Highway 53 westerly towards 8th Avenue, where there's an existing sidewalk that starts and goes all the way to the high school and Falls Elementary. So those would be the two alignments that I would envision applying in a letter of intent to try and get federal funds to assist in those, those improvement projects. And again, we could do them anytime between now and 2024, but we wouldn't get reimbursed until 2024. So I'm just looking for authorization from the council to move forward with submitting a letter of intent, which they need to get by the end of this month.
Do we have a motion to accept the authorization of a letter of intent?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Motion and second to submit a letter of intent to the ARDC for the Transportation Alternatives Program. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four, zero. Next, discuss pursuing a USDA community facility disaster grant funding from the Disaster Relief Act of 2019 for up to $50,000 for equipment acquisition. Administrator Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. Briefly, as you can see, the USDA Rural Development, which is a federal agency, is, is allowing and entertaining applications for this disaster, these disaster monies, and our Kuching County is eligible, not necessarily because we had, we were impacted by any kind of a disaster here, but we're eligible because the county had components or portions of it were. And essentially, these funds are, again, maximized at $50,000, and they can be used for tornado sirens, generators, fire and rescue equipment, trucks, ambulance, that type of thing, or maintenance equipment such as trucks, road equipment, safety equipment. So I need to explore further with our department heads where our greatest need, needs are. But again, I'm, I'm looking for council authorization to spend some time and explore what our needs are, and potentially come forward at a future meeting to submit an application for up to $50,000 to help offset some of our equipment expenses.
So would we need a motion to have you explore that before we?
There's just a lot of things that are going on all at once, so I want to try and keep the council on the front end of it and make sure that you're aware that we're devoting some time to this. Anytime you have a federal grant program, including the one that we just talked about, there's quite a few hoops to jump through and bureaucratic strings attached to the monies, and so I, I was, this was made aware to me by our financial advisor, and I think if we can get $50,000 in a relatively simplistic application, I just want to make sure the council's on board with doing that. We do have budgeted for 2020 up to $180,000 for a new ambulance, so this $50,000 would be a nice offset to that, that expense. And then, again, I need to check with the Public Works Department to see what their equipment, proposed equipment acquisitions are in 2020.
Okay. So we would be accepting a motion to pursue USDA community disaster grant funding?
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. We have a motion and second to pursue a USDA grant fund. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, four, zero. Next, we have, discuss the opioid manufacturers' class action lawsuit. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this was brought to my attention about a week or so ago by Administrator Anderson. Essentially, what's happening, there's been a lot of publicity about it in the media, class action litigation against the opioid manufacturers with regard to the opioid crisis and their liability for helping create that. They are attempting to negotiate settlement, and there's a deadline. We have, cities have an opportunity to opt out of those negotiations, and if they opt out, then those cities can bring their own individual lawsuits against various defendants. My recommendation is that we not opt out, and we just are kind of along for the ride with, most cities, I'm sure, are going to let their states do most of the work on this, and then if the states make a recovery, then those funds will be allocated according to some formula that the states determine, not unlike the tobacco litigation lawsuits that were settled probably 15 or 20 years ago. But there would be no reason for us to opt out and spend funds bringing our own lawsuits. So that's my recommendation, that we not opt out of this litigation.
Do we have to, we're already in it, right? We don't have to do anything?
We, we, if we don't need to do anything, if we just want to stay in, maintain the status quo, it requires affirmative action if we need, if we want to opt out and retain the ability to sue individually.
Is there anyone on this council that would like to opt out of the opioid class action lawsuit?
No.
Okay, then we won't do anything. Any other business to come before the council? All right, next, we will go to boards, or reports of the administrator, attorney, and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. I just wanted to draw your attention to a sheet that we included in the packet, talking about recruiting temporary workers for the 2020 census. This is a copy from an advertisement that we published in the Journal last week, and there is going to be an individual here from the Census Bureau at the Public Library in International Falls tomorrow, which is Tuesday, October 22nd. International Falls tomorrow, which is Tuesday, October 22. He'll be here from 4:00 to 8:00 PM assisting people who want to apply to work as census workers. He'll also be here on Thursday from noon to 4:00 at the International Falls Public Library, again, to answer any questions and then to actually help people on the computers go through the online application process. And I believe from a training session that we had last week that he indicated they're hoping to get 171 applications for census workers for all of Kooching County. So I don't know how many will actually be hired, but they're hoping to get that many applications. So I just want to make the council aware of those two sessions being held this week, as well as the public, and if anybody's interested in working on a part-time, somewhat flexible schedule, I would encourage them to show up at the library and meet with Peter Christensen, who will be here during the hours that I mentioned.
Okay. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor and Councillor, only to welcome Chelsea Nelson to the council. She has been on the opposite side of a few cases I've handled over the last few years for the city, so it's kind of nice to know I won't have to face her anymore, at least for the next year while she has a conflict. And I have nothing else to report.
Okay. Department Heads? No? Yeah, no? Just, we are somewhat time-sensitive this evening because we have a couple of meetings behind this. You did have an opportunity to look at the building officials' report in your packet. If you have any questions, we can get him here the next meeting. Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions? Anybody have anything to bring up? I have just a really quick thing, because I promised the last meeting I wouldn't do this all the time. I did meet with the Chamber of Commerce the day after I was appointed, and it was a fantastic conversation that we had with the board about the CIP and taxes and vision for the city in the future, and that was fantastic. And the last one on my list, on October 16, at the Recreation Commission, I did bring up a conversation starter. We are in three joint powers agreements with, two with the county and KETA and the airport, and one with the school district for the Recreation Commission. The way that both of those work is we have our city councillors have to sit on those, that's the way it's written into the bylaws, and I would like to see and work with those entities to try to get that changed. All of the entities that we are in joint powers agreement, those all came out before 2005. In 2005, the city council went from nine members to five members. We now have a younger city council, both in age and in experience, and I think that it's good to have members on these boards and committees, but I also think that these boards and committees should be more reflective of our community. I use the example more so for the airport than the other two, but the example still makes sense. So we have a city council, which consists of a teacher, a lawyer, someone in retail, health background, and public works. We have to have two people that represent this board on the airport. Which one of us is most likely to know how to run an airport, airport board, and understand all the FAA regulations and stuff like that? I don't think it does make sense. I think one of us should sit on that board for the fiscal responsibilities of the city, but I think we have very qualified people in our community, and I could name two right off the bat that would be more suited to sit on that board if we have the ability to appoint a councillor and an at-large, but we're not able to do that based on the bylaws that the joint powers agreement with the county and the school district have. So I did bring this up for the first time at the Recreation Commission, because the Recreation Commission is a majority of our city council. Starting this next month, it's going to be Councillor Nelson, myself, and Councillor Kraus. And we all have kids, we all are on every many boards, and I think that to get more people involved in our community, more people active, we need to get more people active and try to get more people involved in what we're doing as a city, and more voices actually is not a bad thing. It just, it gets better communication, and it's not the same people saying the same things on different boards. So that is something, if this city council is interested in me making those conversations with the county and the school district, it never says that we don't have to put two city councillors. It just gives us the ability and the flexibility to add somebody different on KETA, or add somebody different on the Recreation Commission, or add somebody different on the Airport Commission. Those are the only three that we are tied in that capacity. So if this board is interested in me pursuing that, I would be more than willing to do that, and it's not because we don't want to serve on those boards, but we have better people in our community than what our knowledge base is on this board. So that's my thoughts. Please.
Although I agree with you, I think this too is one of those discussions that would be better had with a full council, so that Councillor Deitch has an opportunity to weigh in as well.
Councillor Deitch, would you like to?
Sorry. Councillor Buller.
I caught that also when I let it slide.
Thanks, Leon, I appreciate it.
No, fair enough, and this is just a conversation, and I know you sit on the Rec Board, and that's where it started.
And in that, in that meeting, we had that conversation, and I agree that I think we would be better served by allowing you to appoint a citizen.
At-large.
At-large representative, so, yeah.
So we'll just, we'll just leave it at that, then I'll bring this conversation back up with our next, next city council meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
If we have nothing else, under Boards and Commissions, we have Audience. Anyone from the Audience want to address the city council? Hearing none, we will, you have Correspondence, that is in your packet. Next regular city council meeting is Monday, November 4, 2019, at 4:30. This meeting is adjourned.